We're still another mile east.
There's a red light.
Cabbage. We live in a cabbage. That's the cabbage, that's the church. Cabbage.
Steve Dusko right there.
Oh, yeah, okay.
That's my opinion.
Right here. This is sixteen fifty. Sixty-five.
Yeah. You already hit it at six o'clock. All being to order. Start with the invocation. Please say, "All right, from that's your church."
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this city and these who serve. And we ask your blessing on this meeting. We ask for wisdom and discernment and your guidance and your help. And we thank you again in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we'll start with a roll call. Phil, Steve.
Okay. Mayor Jeff Phillips?
Here.
Deputy Clerk Treasurer Percy Martin?
Here.
Council members, Russ Overton?
Here.
Kevin Armand?
Here.
Noel Walshire?
Wiser.
Wiser, I'm so sorry. Jeff Rayburn?
Here.
Ernest Watson, Jr.?
Here.
City Attorney Todd Sammons?
Here.
Building Commissioner Josh Davis?
Here.
Cemetery caretaker Joe Effinger?
Here.
Fire Chief Kenny Hawn? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Police Chief Matt Anderson?
Here.
Utility Officer, Office Manager Heather Smart?
Here.
Lead Line Foreman Garrett Wilker?
Here.
Park Superintendent Heather Hall?
Here.
Street Water Sewers Sanitation Superintendent Bryce Black?
Here.
Gas Superintendent Todd Wilson?
Here.
And Assistant Superintendent Josh Aldridge?
Here.
Okay. Council was afforded the minutes of the last meeting. How would you like to act on those?
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
An emotion, a second to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone oppose? No she carries? This is a portion of our meeting that's reserved for citizens' comments. Is there anybody in the crowd that would like to address the council at this point? Hearing done, we'll move into the adoption of ordinance O2-2025, the zoning ordinance fee schedule. Evan?
Yeah, this is an ordinance we're all aware of. We've discussed it a few times here in council. Comes as a favorable recommendation from the planning commission to establish zoning and planning fees. And there was a question. We got some documentation last week on comparing fees with the surrounding communities in the county. And then Demont was the one that was the closest to what ours are. And Demont's fees actually were somewhat higher than what we're proposing. So I guess I'll open it up to questions and discussion.
Well, thank you for that. I did receive the comparisons too and looked over those. And yes, Demont was a little higher on some fees than what we were. But I feel like the others were, most of them were less than us. But we just have so many fees. And it's, so I don't know if, because, so you look at ours and there's a whole list and a whole lot of fees. Some of the others for Demont was a little bit higher, but they don't have near as many fees as we do. So I don't know if, I don't know. My concern is that we're, that we're, we, I don't, I don't know the word, but that we're just, I don't know. We have a lot of fees, I feel like. So that's my concern. I get that there has to be something probably, but I feel like some of these are really high. And I don't know if the planning commission would be willing to look at them to, for revision or if they're set on them. I don't know. I just, I feel like there's a lot of fees, I guess.
There is a lot of fees. Way too many. And when you look at, when you compare Demont against ours, it's like for, I think it's the first one, I think there is fifteen hundred and ours is a thousand. And then there's none for them. And then we have fee, 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 fee. And maybe they rolled it into that one. I don't know. But I, it's just way too many fees for me to even look at. So I, my, my motion is this. If I need to make a motion like this, take it back to the planning commission and go through that. And you need to eliminate some of those or you, there's got to be some kind of explanation on why you're doing that. I mean, I'm looking at Demont. I'm looking at, what, Reddington didn't have any, I think.
There's a couple.
We feel had a few. But I understand about theirs being smaller. But, and I understand that Demont is closer to us than any of them. But the county was even less.
So if we took it back and then streamlined it, would that be better?
I'll be willing.
Possibly, yeah. As long as we can take that, that action. Can the council take that action to send it back to the?
Yeah, I think we can make that suggestion for sure. Just, you know, if no one moves to adopt this fee schedule, it stays as is until the planning commission presents something to you that, you know, may be more in line with what you want to look at and adopt.
I feel in a way that I'd like to be kind of the standard bearer in Rensselaer. I think that's part of what this does. But I don't have a problem if we, if you want to send it back to the planning commission. Try to refine it.
We don't necessarily need a motion on that one? Or, is that all right? I know we had a couple people on the planning commission that something to do. But we can talk about it again.
Yeah.
I don't like talking about it again. Does it's, I don't think a lot of those fees you would get yet, like you're saying, several at a time. Most of them, it's one or the other.
Yeah, I mean, the reflection of the amount of fees that are is a fraction of how complicated our zoning is. It's not that I'm trying to.
It's not like you're paying like seven and line eight?
Yeah, it's just, there's that many different things somebody could be applying for. That's a long list.
Yeah. I guess there isn't any reason to. And my feeling is if, I mean, and let's find if we want to send it back. But if you can't afford, pay for the zoning fees, you probably can't afford the project.
That's true. There's some truth in that.
None of them, I mean, a subdivision, just like three fifty or something. You're going to subdivision and you can't afford the three hundred dollar. Fine, maybe you're not the guy.
We're not talking about three hundred dollars. We're talking about that, you know, we're talking about that thousand dollar one right there to start off with. From what we were going from, from one fifty, you're hopping up like that? I mean, so, yeah, I, I don't have a problem with some of them, but we just popped up with numbers like that? Because did we check everything before? We had to ask for that second part. You know, this, this all should have been done before it even hit us.
Well, you've got to look at what it is too. Because a thousand dollar fee is for amendments to the zoning text. I mean, it's, that's not something that we want to easily do.
You need to send that back. Because there's no way with all those fees that you have on there that people, we're trying to get people in here and you got, what, twenty-five fees on there for a little bit of everything. People get shell shocked with stuff like that. They do. So, you know, with some of that, you know, when I'm looking at the county, when I'm looking at Demont, we're just, we're just killing ourselves. So, you know, that's how I feel about it. So, you go if you want. I think you should send it back and see if you can do some adjustments.
I agree with Jeff too, that if you've got a developer or builder or whatever and they want, they have a project that they want to do, they're not going to, they want to exploit these fees. They want to inflate. But if you want to send it back to the, are you okay with that, Jeff?
Yeah, I'm okay with sending it back.
Yep.
All right, we'll send it back to the advisory planning commission and hopefully cover some revision with some streamlining as best that we can. Moving on, the adoption of ordinance O5-2025, vacation of public right of way. Josh, you want to address that?
Yes, so we have a public hearing on this. It's the report about alleyway and compactment subdivision adjacent to a county drainage ditch. The petitioners were Kim and Eugene Wright. This is just the final stage to approve this. If you approve the ordinance tonight, then I'll take it to the county tomorrow and get it recorded and submit to the auditor's office so that they can transfer the property to the petitioners.
And this would be our second reading?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance O5-2025.
Second. There's been a motion, a second to approve ordinance O5-2025 for the vacation of public right of way. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Next, are the adoption of ordinance O6-2025 with council manic districts. Did you want to address the council before we start or are you just here and?
No, I'm just here to talk to her. But I did get something from Aaron Kanesovich with our surveyors office and our GIS department. If he could get a shape file, if that's possible.
Yes, that won't be a problem. See, I won't prepare on that. What happened? Glad you know. Counsel, how do you want to act on this? This would be our second reading also?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance O6-2025.
Second. All right, we have a motion, a second to approve ordinance O6-2025, council manic districts. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing nothing further, it's passed. It'll get recorded and then sent to your office. Thank you for being patient with, and we'll stay in Indiana. Next would be the FMLA request. Phil, Steve?
Shelby said she'd say it was an FMLA request.
Well, I made the motion to approve the FMLA request.
Second. Been a motion and a second to approve the FMLA request. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Next is our 2024 USDA RD report. Bryce?
Thank you, Mayor. This report, we brought it before council at the end of last year and there was some more information that was needed. So we finalized all that information. Heather has reviewed it and pushed it out for us to review. Once it's all reviewed and approved, all we need for council is to allow Shelby to sign it upon approval.
Do you need us to, do you need the council to approve it also?
Approve, Shelby can sign that once you and I have a chance to review it, Mayor. I believe Heather put copies in your boxes.
I have not. I put the copy in Shelby's box.
Oh, okay.
Do we need a motion for Shelby to sign after you have reviewed it?
We do. Second. An emotion, a second. Is there any further discussion for the USDA report? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? We'll review it, Bryce and I will review it and then give it to Shelby for a signature. I love the contribution for the economic development on the agenda. I took it off for the first couple ones because we had a little crowded agenda the first couple of meetings. So if we would like, I know Sarah could not be here. We can table it to the next meeting till we can get Sarah here to also talk to you and answer any questions that council may have. But it's totally, it's the same amount as before. Thank you for forwarded the letter itself. And I'll move which direction council wants to.
I think the letter was good. I don't think we need her to be here.
I prefer she, if they're coming to ask for money, I think they ought to come and make some type of a presentation.
How much was it? Ten thousand was our contribution last year. I think the same thing next for this year. But I can go either way.
I just would like to know, I mean, what benefit Rensselaer gets out of JCE. And I'm not necessarily, I'm not against the donation at all. I just have a few questions for her.
So are you making a motion to move it to the next meeting?
I'll make a motion to table it to the next meeting so she can come and make a presentation.
All right, I got one for approval and one for table. What way do you want to go?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize it. I'm sorry. I didn't realize your intention.
So do you want a second, a second for table it for next meeting?
We'll table it, make the motion to table it for the next meeting.
So you're going to second Kevin's, all right. So we're going to table the Jasper County Economic Development Organization contribution for the next available time that the director can be here. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you, council. You reported the credit card statement. First, I'm prepared, sitting on my rights. So if you have any questions, I'm sure you should answer them for me.
I think you have motion to approve that credit card statement.
There's been a motion, a second to approve the credit card statement as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing no questions, the motion passed. Claims approvals next on the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
Second. You really looked over me that time. You thought there was going to be a question or something.
I was best prepared.
There's a motion, a second to approve the claims as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing done, motion passes. Unfinished business, council. Is there anyone that has unfinished business at this point? Committee reports, we can report on the Baker Tilly meeting was held today with our superintendents. Again, this is our approach to a holistic type of spending plan that can be utilized for at least five years down the road. So in case there's somebody else in this chair or if there's somebody else in one of our council chairs, we still have something to go by down the road. I was impressed with how they've done it with other cities, counties and towns. And hopefully it will save us money on what we pay Baker Tilly even. So this should work out to our advantage. Superintendents, anything that, any of you wanted to say on the topic? Heather? Anything? I have to put you on the spot.
You have to put me on the spot. So the utilities are accustomed to preparing a capital asset plan as just part of our year-end process each year. But I think it's important that, that the whole city has not only a capital asset plan, but just a financial plan in general that goes beyond what is required of the budget. And then there's also been some conversations concerning the financials for the utilities. The city operates on cash basis. The utilities operate on accrual. And there's been conversations with Baker Tilly during this year-end process that were audited actually on a, on a cash basis, not accrual. So kind of weighing the pros and cons of whether the utilities go cash basis, like the taxation side or if they stay with accrual. And there's pros and cons to both of it. And so that's really going to be management, meaning a council, council decision. Baker Tilly would be happy to supply you with information if you have questions. They are financial advisors. I think Eric did a great job presenting this morning. I don't know how much he got into it with you this afternoon. But again, it would definitely simplify the reports that you get from the utility side of things each month. So.
And some of the.
There's pros and cons. So switching to, from accrual to cash is simple with our software. But if you make the decision that you want it to be accrual basis in the future, that's a little more challenging for us to go back the other direction. So just something to think about.
And currently we go, how do we do it?
We're accrual right now on the, on the utility side of things. Cash on the taxation, accrual on the utilities. And basically what that does is when we do our billing, we book it as revenue as soon as we update the billing with an accounts receivable, meaning money that's out to us. Whereas on the cash side of things, you don't book that as revenue until you, you actually receive the cash. That's one of the big differences.
And hopefully Eric will be here to explain all that when we get everything put together.
Yeah, through the, the annual financial management report.
But that would be probably a good topic for you just to send an email to the council to try to explain the differences and how we are, where we are with the accrual and how we got to that point. I guess would be another point.
How we got to that point, I'm not sure because it's always been for me, but.
At some point we got there because Eric was talking about it today. So he was a staff guy, he said.
Oh, no, we were talking about the computer conversion and what a nightmare it was.
Okay. Is there any other committee reports? Thank you, Heather. Going into administrative comments. I just wanted to say thank you to Chief Anderson of the police department. Kind of a rough start to our week last week. But you guys put the public's fears at ease as quickly as you could. So I appreciate all the hard work that your department did. Thank you. Also, I just wanted to congratulate the girls' basketball team. My voice sounds a little bit like this because I was at the game Saturday and I'm set by the Wilcoxes. So all of us might have been yelling at the referees at the same time. But it was very exciting to see how well they did in both games. They were very impressive on how they won both games. So congratulations to them. And wish them good luck here this Saturday. We'll start with other administrative comments on the left.
I was going to ask about if the ladies win this tournament this weekend. Would we be having for like a lunch or something?
Breakfast?
You opened that door. I know how that door got opened the last time. Because of the guy sitting in this chair who did it. It was supposed to just be donuts and.
Well, that was way out of it.
That was just one moment.
You had to do it.
That's right. So I don't, it's up to you if you want to open that door. I kind of like it when it's closed. We want to do something to celebrate, that's for sure. I think we should.
One way or another, really.
Well, I think our fire department did a great job too. Celebrating and bringing them in, so. That was really neat. Any other comments, Eric?
No.
Kevin?
Yeah, are we close to roll out the regional system?
It's, Thursday is the training. And then they'll supposedly have it done in about fifteen minutes, they said. So we'll do the training over the police department. Hopefully get everybody in the conference room there. I don't know what all training it's got, but he said it shouldn't take more than fifteen minutes.
Yep.
And then once we get to that point, we'll hopefully put it on our website, on our Facebook page, and then get a spot where people can come and sign up for it. So it was kind of exciting. And.
Is there nerves?
Oh, I'm sorry. There's nerves with that? No?
Good. Well, thanks for your work on that, you and chief and whoever else is involved. Mr. Rayburn?
Mr. Rayburn?
Thanks for your work on that. The policy and procedure manual, is there, we have an update on that one?
We do. We had two other different policies that we wanted to talk with. One of them was specifically working from home. So we identified a policy that we're happy with. It was sent around to our supervisors to look at. I think each one set some positive feedback. There was one thing we addressed on that, which I understand, we can't necessarily see what's going to be on the future. But it may have to stay that way. And then I think we are very close to coming up and presenting it to council.
Thanks to all those that have worked on that too. So we haven't seen the word there in clerk treasurer. And the last thing I just wrote down as I was sitting here, the live stream audio. Emailed you on that a couple of weeks ago. I'm just curious as to, maybe Eric's the guy to answer that question.
Eric's the guy to answer.
No question.
But, but we're working on it. And again, it'll always be a work in progress, a progress.
Yep, yep.
That we get it to where, that we're happy with, I guess, nicely, but.
Good, good. Thank you.
Yep. Well.
Just wanted to wish the lady bombers congratulations and good luck at state this weekend. Exciting for the community.
Thank you. There you go. Jeff?
Bryce, are you going to talk about the, the updates on the sewer, Melville? You want to talk about that?
Yes, sir.
Also, in connection with that, thanks for putting up those recycling bins at parks to park scene, street up front. It's more like an.
Let's thank the county for allowing us to use those trailers.
Thank you. Ernest? All right. We can move into superintendent's reports. Chief, start us off.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't have nothing to say.
Sure?
You can make something up if you like.
No. No, no, I don't. Attorney Sammons?
Same for me. I don't have anything to report, Mayor.
Thank you. Heather?
Just working on wrapping up the year-end reports. The utility side of the annual financial report. We'll have year-end adjusting journal entries here before long. Then PIA reports for electric and gas and annual report for IPA. So just a lot of annual reports this, this time of year. So that's what we're going to be doing. And the weather's changing. So here, mid-March, we'll be back at doing this nice again. So.
Any questions, Ray? Josh, you up?
Thanks, Mayor. All I have for the council now is just want to remind everybody we have a redevelopment meeting this coming Monday at five o'clock.
All right. What's the date? The third? Jeff?
Thanks, Mayor. Just finished up certifications on all the ladders, including the aero truck. Today, they started servicing all the trucks, oil changes and all that good stuff that we do yearly. Fire academy schoolings have started. Good attendance there. And the last thing is we're going to be ready Saturday to escort the girls back into town again. Hopefully it will be a little earlier in the day so I don't get phone calls at eleven o'clock at night. But we're looking forward to it.
Wasn't that late?
It was late.
Well, how else are you going to wake up the town?
I gave you your number next time.
You should. You should. Garrett, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. We've wrapped up our tree cutting season. Now we're going to be grinding some stones and maybe just a few trim jobs. But that's about it. To get the invoice finally from the chassis of the digger truck. So we're looking to pay that year soon. See if we can cut check.
Good. Thank you. Bryce?
Thanks, Mayor. I-65, we have a pre-bid meeting tomorrow to afford any potential contractors a chance to come in and ask questions to the city, the county and Commonwealth. Brick streets, the crosswalk has been determined to will be addressed with the contractor and subcontractor. Hopefully within the next ten days, the two weeks, we'll get that taken care of. And then the water tower project, I need to get with Todd and discuss some of those remaining items. Some of those have been checked off the list. So we're getting closer slowly but surely. And then the Melville sewer, Jeff River, if you had mentioned. The IDM permit was sent out today for them to review. And the railroad permit was sent out last week. So we'll be getting with Commonwealth to see where the. out last week, so we'll be getting with Commonwealth to see where the railroad stands and give them a nudge. But as of right now, it's still in the permitting stage, and it's still out there for some contractors to review, possibly that has the number gone to see if time allows, or if they're willing to do it.
So option one, option two, are some of them up?
Option two. Option two. There's a corrugated metal pipe that they use for casing, and they said the drilling rig will just tangle it all up, so the next route is to go out into Melville and push a new mine through all the way. And Josh had heard some history, that that line was put in by horse and plow in the nineteen thirties.
With Brad running the horse?
Yeah.
That's good.
Other than that, the other projects that we have in the foreseeable future are moving along. Just really no updates at the right now.
Josh? I just have a couple of updates. First one, being Community Crossings, Bryce and I met with First Group in Town and Country last Wednesday. They are hoping to send, County and Country is hoping to send a crew the end of April to start on the concrete work. I'm still finishing up some paperwork with First Group, get that all squared away. The community recycling grant that we applied for through IDIM to replace the recycling facilities downtown is moving along in their system, it's in their financial people. Once they, once the grant is fully executed, emailed will be sent out with a copy of the agreement, and then a Zoom meeting will be set up to discuss that paperwork. Our guys started the Scott Street closure today, which should finish that up tomorrow. We believe that we have the water leaks fixed south of town on College. Bad part is, is there's eight repair bands in that three hundred feet of water main, and at some point, we're gonna have to figure out what to do. The scary part about us self-performing that three hundred feet is there's a six foot, there's six inch gas main right about our head, so we have to figure something out.
Is it the bedrock causing the shifts or something?
It's, my guess, road salt coming off the hill, combination of crappy soil, and talking to E J P about it, we might have just got a bad batch of water pipes back in the day.
That's not cool.
I mean, when we put a valve in, when we put two valves in on that line this summer, this fall, whenever it was, the lettering on the side of the water main was still there, like, so it's, it's not that old.
No. I just wonder if there is something causing...
It's odd, it kind of sits down at that hill, so I'm just imagining everything running to that low spot and sitting in there and causing issues.
What kind of pipe is it?
Ductile.
Any questions for Josh? Joe, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing this evening.
Todd?
Thank you, Mayor. Updates, if weather permitting, R M C will be done this week, and Sunset Ridge will be done this week for service lines. And we are working with Rose Acres, they're gonna maybe up their BTUs from eight million to sixteen million, because they're gonna build two more barns from what two there we have there. And so they said it could possibly do more, depending if they do more expansion.
Keep it in check tomorrow.
Let me do pipe or just more pipe?
We have to, we'll have to, what we have there now will not supply them enough, so right now, they're giving fifty pounds to those back farms, and we'll have to put a two inch line in if it stays at sixteen million. If they start going above that, then it has to start talking about a four inch line or a six inch line, depending on how much more they go, if they do it. So that's, yeah, that's a lot. And then we only go up to a meter, and then they will have eight units at each building.
Wow. All right, any questions for Todd? This is off, Heather?
I will, thank you, Mayor. I've been in contact with our contractors for our roofing projects at both Lurin Pool House and Goodford Shelter. Colors schemes have been selected and materials are in order, so you should expect to see those roofing projects happen this spring. I've also been in touch with Saint John Paving to line up our surfacing and striping of our pickleball courts for springtime, so we'll have those ready for the public come summer. We are working to get people, registration forms out to the public for our baseball leagues for the summer, so those will go out to schools and other locations. This week, we're also going to be offering a disc golf league this summer as well. I've had some meetings with our friends at the Swallow Water Conservation District and Purdue Extension, and we're talking about some collaborative efforts for our parks programming with an education focus, so I'm looking forward to some partnerships with those organizations. And speaking of Purdue Extension, actually it's Swallow Water Conservation District, we're going to do some walkthroughs in our parks and locate some invasive species that are there, and hopefully replace with some native species in our parks. And we moved the furniture into the office at the light plant today, so I can work in a space that's heated. Thank you, Jeff.
Now it's getting warm.
Yeah, it is warm.
All right, any questions for Heather? If not, the next thing on the agenda is a chairman?
I'm gonna watch for a chance.
Been a motion, second. All those in favor, you can go by by saying aye. Thank you, council.